Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's so good to see folks come to the City Council. It's an important City Council meeting tonight. I want to welcome all of you. And, you know, as usual, you know, it's funny, you're probably wondering, we seem to be color-coordinated up here. This is the first time this has happened in the Council history where we're all wearing gray suits. And, but again, you know, we probably should coordinate. Very important meeting tonight because we'll get to discuss the budget, you know, the proposed budget. And we will hear from everyone on that. The other thing is that I just want to remind everyone that the Good and Welfare begins at the end of the meeting. We ask that if you'd like to share with us concerns or have any questions, that you sign up for the Good and Welfare now during the meeting so that you'll have a chance to be able to share with us your concerns at the end of the meeting, once the Good and Welfare portion begins at the end. The other thing that we'd like to remind everyone is that we have a three-minute limit on comments. And we need everyone to adhere to that because it is extremely important that we hear from everyone. And we do need to hear from you. And lastly, very important too, your questions may be answered by us, may not be able to be answered for either legal reasons or we may just not have the information to be able to share that with you at the current time. But we certainly will be, we'll get back to you if the question cannot be answered here. With that, I turn our meeting over to Mr. Frey.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, May 16th, 2017 at 7:00 p.m. My floor call, Councilmember Diamond.
Here.
Councilmember Mandel.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Rama.
Here.
President Torres.
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Jack Shearman, Corporation Council Robert Aristici, and City Controller Kirstie Hansen-Hightower, available soon to the flag.
Okay, again, welcome everyone to our City Council meeting. And we will now begin our meeting with the update from our City Council Manager, Jack Shearman. Alrighty, this Friday, May 19th, is Bike to Work Day. So we're encouraging everyone to ride their bikes to work to do so. I'm personally looking forward to it. As a reminder, the partners markets back and will be open in Kennedy Plaza every Saturday through November 11th and every Wednesday starting June 7th through November 1st from 9 to 2. Don't forget to bring your own bag, we look forward to seeing you there. Memorial Day weekend is just under two weeks away. On Sunday, May 28th, the Congressional Park will hold the 41st Annual City Managers 10 Mile/5 K Race to Remember, dedicated to the memory of race founder Ralph Caffman. We look forward to seeing everybody there as well. And on Monday, May 29th, the city will pay tribute to our veterans with the annual Memorial Day Parade. Rain or shine, together with the American Legion and Veterans of Foreign Wars. Coming up on Saturday and Sunday, June 30th and 4th, from 10 to 5, the city and arts in the plaza will be co-hosting Arts on the Boardwalk, a fine art and handmade craft show on the Long Beach Boardwalk between Edwards and Long Beach Boulevard. Vendors will be selling a wide variety of items and we look forward to seeing everybody there. For more information, visit longbeachny.gov/ArtsImpress. And coming up on the weekend of Saturday, June 10th, LGBT Network is producing Long Island Pride, Pride of the Beach in partnership with the City of Long Beach. More from the statewide market, New York Grant, the Isle of New York Grant. As a reminder, possibly events covered by the LGBT Network and their sponsors. And finally, this evening, I'd like to let everybody know that the 2017 Beach Passes went on sale this past Saturday and all of our beaches will be open this summer. And we're looking forward to a wonderful season. Beach passes can be purchased seven days a week at the MIBO Building located across from the ICE Arena. Hours of operation on Monday through Friday, 9 to 6, and weekends 9 to 4 until June 25th. For more information, visit longbeachny.gov/Summer. Thanks. Okay, thank you, Mr. Shin. Just a last reminder, and that is that, again, we hope that everyone will adhere to the kind of decorum that we expect at any government meeting. Again, it means that we don't encourage anyone to speak or cross-talk against anyone else here regardless of whether or not we agree with what was said or not said. And again, we ask for everyone to keep to that rule that we have. And I want to thank again everyone for being here. Mr. Freyer, we're ready?
First item will be public hearings for the purpose of giving citizens an adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on a general summary of the capital improvement program for the five-year period from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2022. And also, a bond ordinance authorizing various capital projects in and for the City of Long Beach, Nassau County, New York. State NASTA cost there of $14,973,000. Appropriating set amount therefore, including the expenditure of $5,525,950 expected to be received in state and federal aid. Authorizing issuance of not to exceed $14,973,000 bonds. Upset saved finance set appropriation.
Okay, this is our annual capital plan. As a reminder, Capital Improvement Plan advances projects that improve the health, safety, and quality of life of residents, designating projects that will make improvements to the city's infrastructure. In a moment, our Deputy Commissioner of Public Works is going to give a presentation that the city clerk is setting up. Projects included this year are a continued commitment to roadway reconstruction and road resurfacing, upgrades to our water and sewer deliveries, treatment facilities, improvements at the recreation center and ICE Arena, thermal imaging cameras, and even personal protection bailout system for the city's fire department. I'd ask our Deputy Commissioner of Public Works to give us a quick presentation over the years to play.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Fabrizio, I'm the Deputy Commissioner of Public Works, and I'm going to give you a presentation tonight on 2017/2018 Capital Budget and Capital Plan. Before I get started, I just want to mention that the plan is actually on its website so you can access it in that format if you'd like to see it. This presentation will also be on the city's website tomorrow. If you'd like to see it, it'll be available. And as far as this plan goes, every single project that's in the plan that's on the website is backed up by a specific worksheet that's in this book that we keep on file in Public Works. So it's a really detailed description of every project that's in the plan, just as a little background. Okay, so let's get started. The Capital Budget and Capital Improvement Plan advances projects that improve health, safety, and quality of life of city residents. They address issues in priority order, making government more efficient and responsive. The projects that express a continued commitment to roads drainage, shoreline, transportation, public safety, which is an improvement to pollution by assets, buildings, grounds, which is trees and two playtimes, parks, the rehabilitation of city parks and playgrounds, technology, and sewer and water. And we also have another category, which is projects related to economic development. How are projects selected? Well, there's many components of how projects are selected. By visual, visual inspection, consultation and review with other commissioners, department heads, superintendents, and chief account operators. Discussions with the DPW staff. Priorities identified throughout previous years. Projects that have completed, designed for needs and mandates identified by regulatory agencies. That is like the Department of Water and污污的 conservation and Department of Health. Projects identified, previous capital programs that have not yet completed. Projects covered by grant funding and Superstorm Sandy recovery projects. How is the capital plan broken down? Well, basically it's broken down by a general fund, a sewer fund, and a water fund. The general fund has seven categories, which is roads and drainage, shoreline, transportation, public safety, grounds, parks, and technology. The sewer fund is comprised of the collection system, the water pollution control plan, and the water fund distribution system, the treatment plan, and equipment. Just going to give you a quick overview of last year's capital plan. There were $7.4 million from the general fund that was allocated. We proposed 110 projects. We've successfully completed 71 of those projects. The remaining projects get carried over to the current deal, which is this year's plan. Just want to give you a little rundown of some successful completed projects. We have some photos up there as well. The first one is far as the street reconstruction, that's a photo on the right there. You know, successfully completed project that we had here this past year. Park Street is going to be paved by, probably by the middle there. There's the final stages of that project, some of them are left. We overlayed California and Nebraska water, which is a beach and water. Swatch Parks, the bottom is the ICE Arena playground that we recently rehabbed at the end of last year. The break project is ADA compliant, it's a wonderful park. We also rehabilitated the flush replay ground as well, which came out great. That was actually uncovered, came out really nice. Some work with the ICE Arena. We replaced all the lockers that compared to the regular doors. Buildings, we've done the MLK roof. First phase, I should say, the MLK roof. The second phase is going to be done the next couple of weeks, maybe on the roof. That was a change order, but they had half the temperature rise and probably we haven't had that, so. We're going to do that next couple of weeks. The Seaport Center roof is being designed right now, that's going to be done shortly. 150 West Pine Street San Francisco Lodge, it's about 99% complete. And the Maplewood Boulevard House is coming along nicely to the left. So our sewer, these two projects that I listed there, were basically regulatory compliance issues. They're very big projects that we finished in December. One was construction of the deparition building, which is that building on the Poplar Net. Such a way to back the baseball treatment plant. That was a million-dollar project. We had to reduce the core room that comes out of Long Beach from down to 25 milligrams per liter. We also had to rehab the sand with the three, the middle picture to the left. That was a $2 million project. That was destroyed, that was a stupid storm sandy, and we just got it back on par after four years. As far as the water treatment plant, that slide on the bottom right is our newly installed backup generator. It's installed at elevation 14, so it's probably one of the safest places in Long Beach. It's one of the highest places in Long Beach for backup generators. And that is used in my soul, so it's another successful project. So what's next, what's coming up? Another exciting year planned coming up. 600 block West Hudson, that's currently out of bid right now in our office. A bid to do the first week of June and hopefully to initiate construction. This plan is passed in early as July, that's a six-month project. 100 block West Market, that's the total that we picked up on the left there. Street is in really poor condition. We have an RFP out now for design services for that road. So that will probably be done sometime next year, but maybe in March. But that's one of the projects that's in plan. We're going to overlay Bee Street between Tennessee and Nevada. We successfully did the first phase, I think a yard gap ago, between Tennessee and New York. And we're going to finish that now. Edwards Boulevard Resilient Connectivity, that's called a TAP program, it's a grant program. We received approximately $1.2 million to rehabilitate the rank on Edwards between Park Avenue and North Walk. It's called the Transportation Alternatives Program, GRAT. We also have money, about $2.5 million, but it's called Park Avenue Resilience Connectivity. It's basically to rehab Park Avenue west of Long Beach Road. We're going to be putting in bike lanes, new curb sidewalks, new profilement pavement, asphalt double lights, it's going to be a nice project. As far as the shoreline, that first project that I mentioned there, it's called the Moss Shore Critical Destruction Protection Project. It's a $20 million project that we're hoping to kickstart in the next six months. It's basically going to, you know, obviously the city's lap will be the shoreline that we have, the Hoover River, the bridge. We're finally going to be hopefully undertaking that project. We're putting in a bulkhead, stormwater pump station to address the flooding on the riverside that happens at Pine constantly at every storm. We're going to be addressing that, so that's a really great project. It's a 404, few of the integration project, house of integration project. Then we have the New Horizons, meaning reconstruction, bulkhead replacement. That's a $12.5 million project. We're going to get that moved to by the end of this year. That's to replace bulkhead in various locations. Buildings, we have many logic projects planned for this year. It's an improvement renovation of the City Council chambers back here. Elevator rehab, a lead bathroom on the second floor. We're going to be doing work at our central rod, we have a housing mitigation brand. We're going to be flood-proofing that whole building by putting in flood doors at all the bay areas in that building, putting in a new underground lift. It's a $5 million project. As far as parks, we're going to rehab the ICE Arena locker rooms, which are really poor shape at the ICE Arena. Public Safety, which is the police and fire department. We're going to have new patrol vehicles, which are police upon desperate needs. New traffic signage and markings, and citywide security cameras. The fire department, they have new thermal imaging cameras and personal protective equipment, which Jack mentioned earlier. As far as water, we had $2 million in last year's capital plan. We didn't put another $500,000 into that, which is, so now we have $2.5 million essentially. And the intent is to address a couple of, to address the material area aging system and also to address the walks, which are really, a really aging infrastructure area in the city. We have a porch and a water main, they have one on, since I've been here, it's been projects that have been ruined. But now we have $2.5 million to celebrate for that. We're also going to do a map for water systems as well, which I have bench on the bottom there. The sewer projects, a lot of the sewer projects are heavily taken from regulatory issues, such as primary settling tank, that has spear placement, gear drive replacement, ammonia removal, whether a regulatory requirement to reduce ammonia from 23 milligrams per liter to 9 milligrams per liter. They have a digest service, they want to implement sewer maintenance program and do sewer maintenance replacement. In summary, plan summary. Public Works will invest $6.2 million for 2017/18 general fund improvements this year, $3.25 million for the water sewer fund. That spreadsheet below basically summarizes that request in the first column. It's basically $6,197,000 for general fund, $2.4 million for sewer fund, and $850,000 for water fund. This next line essentially is basically debt service for this, for this, for this thing. Quick, clear on that?
So just to keep, you put notes on the debt service related to this capital plan. So Moody's continues to cite the city as having a manageable debt burden. It's currently only 11% of our total operating budget, which is very low compared to other municipalities, and very low compared to Moody's analyst trends. Additionally, this year, the city's portion is the lowest, is lower than it was last year. The balance that's not covered by the city will be reimbursed 100% by federal and state grants. The city continues to try to make improvements and upgrades to its facilities and infrastructure while trying to limit as much as it can the burden on the taxpayers. So we do look to get grants where we can and apply debt to projects that make sense for the city. This particular capital plan was definitely prepared with a high on debt service. We have amounts falling off over the next few years, but we'll see our debt service decrease. So those decreases more than outpace the increase that would go on for this, for this year's plan in the general fund. It will almost offset it entirely in the water fund and it does help towards the sewer fund. This slide actually talks about our constitutional debt limit. So we are tasked with staying under 100%, obviously, but we don't want to get anywhere near that. Right now, the city only has about 25.47 of its debt limit exhausted. There are many cities on Long, I should say, in New York State that have debt limits upwards of 50, 60, 70, and even 80%. So this is what we talk about when we mean that Moody's claims to have a manageable debt burden compared to what we are allowed to issue by law, or nowhere near that now. And just one last thing. So I mentioned it before, so our debt as a total of our operating budget is only 11.4%. I think it's been mentioned previously that it's upwards of 30%, but that's just not the case. And we just wanted to make sure that we made a point to talk about how we do look at our debt burden. We look at it every year, we look at it every month when we pay debt service. And it is something that we are trying to manage as a city. We are proud that Moody's claims that we have a manageable debt burden and we continue to work to keep it that way. If you want to say.
And fortunately, you know, we're proud that we've done over $120 million worth of work in Superstorm Sandy and continue to build stronger, smarter. Thank you very much. You have a good day.
I want to thank our Deputy Commissioner Fabrizio for that presentation. I particularly was very happy to hear about the work that's going to be given in the walks. For many years, we've known this is like a ticking time bomb. And it's because of the kind of, the infrastructure that's been there for many years and how we need to improve it. So I want to commend the Public Works for tackling that, you know, that has really been, you know, not ignored, but of course, no work has begun or attempted in the last 20, 30 years in that area. So we're very happy to see that happening. I do have a question for Mr. Fabrizio, and that is that the recent work at Lindell, the bulkhead there, was that work completed?
The work at Lindell, certainly, the Bailey Bulkhead is incorporated in that project in June.
So there's still, it needs to be done?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, very good. Are there any questions from the Council or Deputy Commissioner?
This is how we follow. Speaking of the walks, it is one of the most detrimental things, I think, in the city. But what work has been done? I realize we put away $2 million last year, we have another half a million coming. But there has been some consistent work happening with, because I know there's no doubt, I think, about. Can you just talk about what we've been doing?
Well, with this money, the first thing we are going to do is we're going to write up a question for proposals for this work, which basically we're going to retain a consultant that's going to design. How many of your phase the project, meaning we're going to do first section between Brand and New York, and then the section between Brand and Lindell. Probably it's going to be two separate pages. And we'll get a good idea of the budget once we do one section. So we're going to put that in our table, and we're going to basically retain a consultant to do the engineering.
So we're basically talking about managing the water supply that's already there?
Yeah, so the intent, the way I see it at least, is that we're going to, right now, the water and sanitary sewer run behind the houses in the walks. So you have a four-inch diameter, 67-year-old water main adjacent to, it's, how do we all catch that? The sewer being supplied. So you have it right next to each other running behind the houses, which is right there, is not correct. So what we were proposing to do was run the actual water main down the actual walk, the walk down, so there's a lot of separation that is required between sewer and the water. That's, that's what we've been planning for all these years, basically. Like when we had done Park Avenue many years ago, we put out tees, 12-to-18-inch tees, to set it up, so to speak, so we can actually do the project. So the groundwork has been laid for that. Same thing at Bee Street, you know, there's, there's tees there, so to speak, that so we can kind of go down the walks. So, yeah, we've done a lot of that work, and the water's not coming back.
That's very proactive thinking because we don't want to wait for there to be an emergency in the walks to then tackle it. And I think that that's very, very good news. And I say this because I recently was living in the walks while our house was working on it. And I saw that this is something that was a ticking time bomb. And we're glad that we're tackling, you know, this after all these years. Thank you, thank you so much. And then thank you, Mr. Rama, for that comment. Are there any other comments, you have some more?
Yes, just briefly, can you just talk a little bit about the GIS system? In terms of the mountain water system, I think it'd be helpful if the residents have some further information regarding this.
Yeah, we basically put, I believe, $200,000 in the capital budget for mapping of the water system and the sanitary sewer system. Right now, it's somewhat antiquated. If we have a problem with the water system, you know, Superintendent Ward will come to me and, you know, I have a binder in my office that basically has, shows the intersections and the valves of those intersections, and an overall map of the city. Everything is hard copies, nothing's digital, nothing, it's somewhat okay. Sewer system is exactly the same way. You know, we have a hard copy map of the city that shows the whole system. You know, a lot of it is just institutional knowledge, unfortunately, a lot of things aren't applied. So we're looking to have one comprehensive GIS, to map the water system, any type of sewer system. Right now, we do have a GIS system, but the only thing that's mapped on it, you know, our small sewer system, that we do have a complete map of, and it's actually a really excellent system. You could actually put on a cash register, it'll say when was the last time it was cleaned, and what's the inbred of it, what's the renovation, so it is very detailed. So we want to have that same ability with the water and the sewer system, which we just don't have right now.
That was an excellent idea, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just have a quick question also.
Sure.
Part of the request is for citywide security cameras. Do you know if there are any Greek term locations?
I don't know, the police commissioner is here, he might be able to answer that better. That was one of the police things in the budget I believe. Maybe Mike can, upside down.
I want to welcome Commissioner Tackey, and thank you for being here.
The citywide camera program is a multi-year program, and this would be phase two. Phase one were the installation of cameras in City Hall on multiple floors. We're looking to do additional target hardening to the building with a front desk person, possibly putting in, or hopefully putting in, a magnetometer, which is a metal detector at the lobby. We're looking at some different key functions to have access devices to City Hall so we can lock it, lock it back, when the councilmen and city manager are having meetings and there's no lots in the building, it'll keep people up the floors. So that's just part of some of the things we're doing in addition to the cameras. The next phase of the camera project is on the boardwalk from Long Beach, Monroe Boulevard to Magnolia Boulevard. They will capture every image of someone coming up onto the boardwalk from the ramps. And then there'll be mid-blocks that'll capture activity on the boardwalk. Today, we were very fortunate, we just received two new Chevrolet Caprices, which are lots more cars, a lot lightweight, and we're going to put those on the southern coast so they can have stop on the boardwalk to address some of the concerns that we have up there. We have a dog epidemic, if you will, we have a skateboard epidemic. An Italian fellow who, since I'm tired today, has been known to be on the boardwalk frequently and seeing these violations. So that's our next phase. The phase after that will be to completely video the entire transportation facility as well as the surrounding City Hall. And then we hope in the future to expand each year into covering all the city facilities, the water block, the sewer block, the infrastructure of all our city services that are on Pine Street. And eventually get to all of our parks being on videotape with a long-term plan to put all of this access into the OEM that we hope to build with the grant that we got from Pima.
Thank you. And I just have one question. I do realize that, you know, the cameras, an excellent question that Councilman Mandel mentioned. Now, in knowing that we do have these violations, such as dogs, for example, urinating on the boardwalk.
Well, their mere presence on the board is a violation.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, seeing that and having recorded that, does that mean that they will be fined?
No.
What would that mean?
Criminal procedural law requires a series of things to occur. For a violation, which is the most minimal offense that you could commit, it must be committed in a police officer's due birthday employment and in his presence. So we, right now, can't use videotape. I don't know that that will change, I mean, the world has come to rely on videotape for everything, so.
Yeah.
I mean, we all just come to rely on videotape for everything, so that may be something. But right now, it's legislatively prohibited, not even.
Okay.
Just briefly, Commissioner, as you go through several phases, do you anticipate any kind of job creation, someone who's going to monitor the various phases with respect to security?
The, when we get a fully operational OEM, that would also, in the off hours or non- emergency hours, the city manager's desirous of having what is commonly called the three-one-one system, which is similar to our notification system we have now, but will be all comprehensive, and that would require additional personnel to manage. In addition, as most of we're talking about cameras, we have just installed the license plate leads throughout the city, and in one week, we had one million reads. So we do anticipate having a lot of activity from that. That's a budget question, why we increased the impound fees so drastically, is because we feel that we will have tremendous success with this program. Today, we were using it to work out cases, and in twenty minutes, we located and arrested two violators. So they're very, very successful. We're averaging a hundred cars a day that are potential impounds and arrests for various charges. You know, they get control down over your partial reads, so about seventy percent are good to go. So we're going to stay on top of that, and hopefully that will help out also.
Will there be a special mailing for our local residents? Just, I guess, I guess that's the city manager. Will there be a special mailing just to educate our residents with respect to...
I think there'll be some public education, I don't anticipate a full mailing.
Okay.
We have to work on press release to explain to people, and the big thing that the public really needs to know, and they want to know, this information is not for sale. This information is for police, information only. It's not going to be given out, it's not going to be shared with other agencies. This is just going to be our internal information. We're only going to hold it right now, based on the number of reads. It's expensive to store this kind of information, so our plan is to only hold the information for one hundred and twenty days. So it's not, it's not really a Big Brother thing, it's really a safety initiative to get people that shouldn't be on the road, off the road, and catch bad guys that are wounding the police. And it also will help us locate and murder alerts, which are missing children, and silver alerts, which are missing adults.
Okay. Ms. Donnie, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I think it's wonderful that we've worked on installing that. I think it would be important, if I echo Councilwoman Moore, with regard to letting the public know exactly what it is and exactly what we intend to do with the information, so there isn't any concern on their part. Thank you for working on, putting it together. My question was more with regard to the shoreline projects that are in the, that are in the plan. You mentioned that the critical infrastructure protection project would start in six months, but do you have a timeline with regard to how long it will take to complete once it's started? I know there's been issues with funding, but once it begins, what's the timeline for it to be completed? And is that the same with regards to community reconstruction?
I think they have an average deadline that has to be done within two years.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Commissioner, I just have one last question regarding the shoreline piece. You know, I think we do receive calls all the time about our shoreline by the, where we have our utilities. And where are we? Where are we with making that a more, a safer shoreline for our utilities and, of course, that community that's right there? So it's a, it's a concern that people have.
We've had quite a few obstacles with this project, I guess. One, there's been failure of the railroad design on this project, it's actually very disconcerting. You know, the touting how resilient they're, their facilities are, unfortunately, you know, they failed to sign on our project, which is unfortunately a prerequisite for us to move forward. And that's probably the biggest obstacle. Second obstacle has been spending funds from the Arm Corps, and the D C, and the other regulatory agencies. That's what we're working on, we're in the final stages. And then we do have a mission, Townham said regarding the land, some of that land that we're going to be working at, you know, we think, so to speak, is their land, and, you know, they recently told us that they want to compensate for that property, so we're trying to work through that. So there's definitely been some obstacles. Townham's issue will be worked out, the permit issue's going to be worked out. Railroad's been the most frustrating. You know, and we're going to have to put this probably to another level at this point, to promote this storm recovery, or the mayor's office can really use some of the help.
Okay, thank you, thank you again.
I think that these shoreline projects are really a priority for residents and as well as the city council, to the extent that we need to reach out to other elected officials or different levels of government, I think that's something that we'd be willing to assist with.
Yeah, absolutely. I would say for railroad, it's very frustrating. So there was an article, Newsday touting, we went to see for that, and so we're looking at it now. It's very frustrating. They want us on our project.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Are there any, the public? Dubau, that's right. I had a, I don't know what's happening to me.
It's my first time here. Dubau, a couple of questions. The bulkhead, the last time I spoke to you about it, is it a matter of design? We're only thirty percent, forty percent with the design. What does that stand in terms of the project? How close to plan being completed are we, and how close to work actually being started? And then I got...
I'll let Deputy Commissioner speak to it, but I think that's what we just spoke to.
Well, I couldn't quite understand it, just, you know...
And in addition, I just remind everybody that these projects are not within the scope of the capital plan, they're separate funding, but obviously, they're absolutely critical for the city. We're relieved that the city doesn't have to pay the...
Right, twelve point six million.
Right.
So, yeah, I think, I think what you're referring to is different than the North Shore Purple Construction Protection Program. New York Rising Community Destruction Project, the city was basically giving twenty-five million to do three projects on this replacement of bulkheads. The second one was the OEM ones, I believe, and the third was drainage improvements. The OEM ones, which is one I wish I would have mentioned in the slides, actually progressed really nicely, probably within the next six months, we're not seeing construction on it. So you can see, right behind that wall, actually, that's where it's going, so you can see that work going on, which is really important. Back to your question, the original question. One of the problems we're having, this is the official by the result of storm recovery, and the funding has been problematic at best. We were basically allocating twelve and a half million dollars to do one thirty million dollar board. And that's where the problem's coming in right now. We're dealing with, we've got a lot of storm recovery, modify that budget, it's been very slow, very difficult. That's really where the problem is. Where we came up with this list of projects, there was basically thirty million dollars worth of projects, twelve and a half million dollars. We're trying to figure out a way to deal with that budget issue. Because part of the issue is, I know New York Rising has a deadline for residents to bulkhead it, and I think that might be September first or something, so if the city's not going to get around to doing this in the next couple of years, me and lots of other people right on the North Shore have an issue. You know, do I get funding from New York Rising and spend money that way? And obviously, it's not going to cover all my expenses, because New York Rising doesn't, but, or do I wait for the city? I mean, I think that's part of the thing that you mentioned, that the Townham said looking for us to pay them for that eighteen inches that would go into the bay. That's a separate issue on the North Shore Purple Construction Project, that's one before, as a mitigation up there. That's a little different, because we have, there's no bulkhead that exists in that area. We're trying to establish an alignment between the railroad and the bridge, and the alignment that we established, you look at the survey, it shows that some of the problems that were, there's cake games there.
Amazing.
The funds really being told that it was worth nothing, they don't want to give it to us, but recently, we've heard that they want seven dollars each one. So it's about acre of land, twenty-three thousand, seven, you know, we have a thousand dollars. I think we would, yeah, so that's something we, we're going to negotiate, we have to negotiate. But it is, but they're all, it's very confusing, the whole concept, it's two completely different projects, one's North Shore, one's Shore Protection, that's twenty million dollars, and we have to do a project and see how people, twelve and a half million dollars. So there's really, there's a different project.
There's really a start date for the bulkhead.
I don't imagine, I think you just love the right period. My other question is, and I spoke to you about it, the check valve. Do check valves put at the end of the street? They're absolutely useless. And I remember I spoke to you about it, that they need to be maintained, and they're not being maintained. Is there money in this, in this budget going forward to do maintenance on these things? Because every time, we had a high tide the other day, streets flood, because it backs up that storm, there's stuff that gets squashed there. The design of it, either the, either the check valve design is poorly, or the drain itself, which is open on the, on the curbside, that's totally open, so for any debris that's there, it's flushed into the street, it's starting to check out, and then it's useless. They're, they're clear of that. It needs to be maintained on a regular basis to go to fill the check valves to run, otherwise, it's just throwing away money to put a check valve in. So there's definitely money in the capital plan for replacement.
Putting in, putting in new ones.
But they were replaced, they were replaced a year, year and a half ago, maybe. And to replace them every couple of years, because they're not being maintained, it's just, it just throws money, just throws money away.
Maintenance is an absolute final problem, no doubt. That's why I know you, I thought, you're right, right. I'm the, I mean, what Commissioner asked, but I understand.
Right, and, and I pointed out to Commissioner that the way the storm drain itself is, you have a, the punters on the street that has the drainage, and then on the curbside, it's open. And that's, if they, if some way of blocking that or putting some other drainage thing, that would solve a lot, I think, a lot of the problems.
Is there a curving line?
Yeah, the curving, the curving line.
It's interesting that you said that.
Six, eight inches, that, that, if someone has a beer can, that'd block it, flushes through there.
It's interesting you said that, because we're actually, on all of the projects, we have eliminated the curving line for that reason.
Good, if you wanted the other Kerwood Street, just replace the two at the other Kerwood Street, and that would solve a lot.
Yeah, that's all we need to do, but I understand.
We were, it's possible, you know, even something could be, not Jerry Ray, but some, there's a way, there's a way to retrofit it, you can sort of, you can look at that. And then clean the valve out, and then maybe the work.
Well, this is why it's so important to hear from residents on these things.
There's another problem, when it was replaced ten years ago, and debris gets caught there, and it's just, then you're going to replace it again, I think, like a year or two ago, and it's no solution, you know, it's a constant issue.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think the entire canal is, people are very concerned, as they are in the North Park area. And like the Deputy Commissioner was saying, that, you know, we do have monies that were a lot, you know, allocated to us, it doesn't look like it's going to cover the entire cost, but we do have to tackle this in one way or another. You're absolutely right. So we appreciate you coming up here, Mr. Dubau.
It just, it gets very frustrating, having gone through, saying they haven't rebuilt the house, having the house elevated, and then I got to put my car down the street in this very area.
Yeah.
It's an issue, it's an issue every time.
Thank you. We have, Mr....
Mr. Fabrizio, if you could just get a, I think that's really interesting to talk about retrofitting some of the drains to stop some of the trash, and maybe making it to the tieflex valve. If you could maybe come up with a price, or just...
You know, it's interesting what's happening.
And maybe we can do a test on one of the, one of the canal blocks and see if that actually helps.
Kerwood.
Kerwood, maybe come to mind.
What's happening too with those, they pull them curb blocks.
I understand.
It's also an issue of the cloud. Yes, every storm that we have, twenty of them, like, twenty of those broken, and they were difficult to fix, so now we've totally gotten away with those.
Okay.
We're just putting in flush drains, basically with the valve.
So maybe, so maybe you can get a price for that, and see if we can maybe do a pilot on one block and see if that helps at all.
Definitely.
Mr. Dubau, good to see you. Please state your name to the record and...
Amy Dubau. This is not the first time that he's mentioned that. We've been talking about this for six months to a year, if not three years, and it's not interesting anymore. I mean, that keeps being the issue. That's interesting, and yeah, that, yeah, we heard that's a problem. Nothing's getting done about it. I'm tired of hearing that it's interesting. I'm also a little tired of hearing about the bulkhead, and now we're hearing that it's not going to cover it. Is that going to happen? Is there a chance it's not going to happen? That the bulkhead is, is it going to get done somehow?
Yeah, right now, we're working with Gosa on the finances of its project.
Okay, then is it going to happen? Somehow is it going to happen, or is there still a chance that it's not going to happen? Because I've been given a deadline from New York Rising for a fraction of what it's going to cost, but something has to get done, but I've got to get it done before the end of the year if I'm going to use New York Rising money.
I'm still...
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting annoyed, because we've been talking about this for years and years, and now it sounds like it may not happen. Is there a chance it's not going to happen?
Well, no, we've been allocating money to do this, to do this with the money, and it's got to begin, at least to, with the money that we've been given to do this. So yes, the answer is it's got to be done, or else we have to return the money. We want to use the money for what it's needed.
Or else our block, our, our, the entire block side is not going to be protected. It's not just going to be our house and our property, it's everybody else's block that's going to be affected, which is why this has to be done citywide.
This is why we fought for this project. This is why we fought for this project, and this is what we've been communicating to Storm Recovery to make work.
So when is it going to get started?
Of course, we're going to have to pay for it with Gosa, with Gosa.
You see what Gosa says?
Storm Recovery needs...
We just have to keep pushing to get this going, and it's a real...
What it is that the community has to do?
We don't have something for you to do at this point, but I think that, appreciate the question, because if, if and when there's something that we need in terms of communicating and advocacy, we won't be shy about asking for it, for sure.
I mean, because it's, it's getting worse. It's not just staying the way it was, it's getting worse. The land ends up falling into the bay.
Yes.
I mean, if I could, if I could just respond, I think that this is a priority for each of us. Each of us receives phone calls, emails, messages on a regular basis with regard to this exact issue. I think it's a priority for, for every one of us. Unfortunately, we're kind of tied up with different agencies and all sorts of freight tape, but it is, it is a priority, and obviously, if we, if it becomes an issue with different agencies, then we would certainly reach out and continue to ask for your advocacy as well, but it is something we intend...
We have a deadline.
No, I, I understand, but it is something that we intend to work on and advocate on behalf of the residents here, or specifically affected by it.
If it doesn't get done, you never want.
We, we'll have to get back to you, and again, you know, Mr. Dubau, thank you for coming up and sharing your thoughts. I will ask also that if there are any other comments on this first item, well, actually, the item regarding capital improvement, let's, go ahead, and welcome.
Hello.
It would just need your name to the record.
Dean Mifiori.
Yes.
Just a quick note on the, on the cameras on the boardwalk.
Yes.
We take that attention, there's a tendency of the city to, to use this small section of the center of town, so we're going to put cameras on the boardwalk too, as a deterrent. But why is one of them being done between, I think it was Monroe and Blackmore? We've had numerous problems down at the West End portion of the boardwalk, the vandalisms, vandalism, the boom steam toss over the boardwalk. We've had a number of reports physically spoken for that reason, but why are we only doing it in those sections? And why are we looking at it at some point? I mean, if you look at, if you look at it, there's two empty lots right now, there's two empty lots.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to finish up.
I'm just saying, there's two empty lots, and there's a lot less residential currently in that area. So we should probably be trying to cover a little bit more of the residential.
That's a, that's a very good question. If you have any other questions for our Commissioner, let's take care of them right now, so that we can take care of the answering your questions if we can.
Yes.
Ms. Mifiori, is that the only question you have for our Commissioner?
That's, that's...
Wonderful, wonderful, thank you, thank you, Ms. Mifiori. Okay.
I guess I wasn't clear. I said in the beginning it was in phases, that this is the initial phase, because this is where our most of our activity is, most of our local events. We have every intention of expanding it east and west until we get the entire boardwalk. Those are additional phases, but that would be definitely ahead of doing campuses in parks, because those are low-level issues, but we still want to protect all of the city's property. So this year, what we've budgeted for, to try to be reasonable on the taxpayer, and what work we can, the scale of work we can actually accomplish, that this is the first phase of the boardwalk, and it will be expanded east and west.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions on this item that we're discussing with the capital improvement, folks? Yes, please come forward. Mr. Bendt, good to see you. Welcome.
Good evening, John Bendt. I know you guys are used to me coming up here and kind of hammering away at you, and actually, I'm just like the convoy. of hammering away at you. And actually, I'm just like the convoy. I think this is a very well-balanced, well-thought-out capital plan. Just a couple of, I'm looking more for clarifications than anything, just on a, a few things. There is money in here, how far do we find the amount? Critical facility resiliency. And I was just wondering, what are those critical facilities? $640,000. Critical facility resiliency, six hundred.
See, it's under non-city funding, right? So it's not in this, in the heart of the capital plan. It's funding coming to us from outside.
Oh, did I miss? I'm sorry.
It's through the, it's through the CRP.
Okay, sorry.
It's the money that this, this state allocated.
Rank out.
You're right. I missed the, the wrong column. Sorry. Okay. Next one. We have a million dollars in there for a basketball court bubble. Well, if we were rolling it in cash, that would probably be a really nice thing to have. Is that really a priority?
It's, it's not in there. You see.
Pushed out.
Yeah, it's, it's in there in 2021. It's probably a nice way of saying it's a potential someday project that was on the drawing board that is, is not on the radar screen for funding in the near future.
Oh, okay. There is a.
I think that's been cost out. So just be understanding of, hey, look, if you want to do this, here's what it costs, right?
Okay. So none of this money necessarily that would be bonded tonight would be allocated to that?
While we show, you know.
So it's a future wish list.
Right. You show how yours is potential stuff, what, what's on here for, for current is what's in this year's program within the city fund.
Okay. Which they sort of answered. We have $100,000 in for a, for a little parking study. And I guess I'm just wondering, we've kind of studied parking problems to death. We know what the problems are. Can we maybe get to some implementation of some fixes and put some money behind that? So just kind of general comment?
Yeah, I think you have to do, that's what essentially it is. Getting ready to build things and figuring out how to do it.
Okay. And then just, instead of comment, there's some line items in here that have no numbers in them, they're just blank. So you have a line item, but there's no figures in them. It's a zero. So I don't know if that's, we just, maybe there was something and you removed it.
Right.
And then for the, the water towers, there's over $8 million in there for removal of water towers. I assume that's the oldest, the really oldest stand pipe.
Correct.
Is that, is that being replaced or is that just gonna come down and at one point on that replacement, you're turning it with pumps?
Right now, we're still evaluating that. We have, we're in the form of going along with the ONG board. That's what we've had and all we have.
But the plan is that'll, now is that the wish list because it's kind of pushed out or is that gonna happen?
Oh, that's gonna happen.
Well, it's more of a thing.
Yeah, that's gonna happen. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. And we think those were excellent questions. Any other comments on this item, first item, capital improvement? Okay, with that, folks, we're gonna move on to our next item. Thank you for sharing your concerns.
Do you want to post a comment?
Yeah, okay. Okay. So, item one is the resolution authorizing the adoption of a capital improvement program for five years from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2022 inclusive. Would the adoption of this?
I will.
One second.
I will.
I'm happy to see that we made effort to decrease the amount that we borrow in comparison, first of all, to other municipalities. I was also happy to see it selling the road construction as well as other steps that are taken to ensure that the city continues to become more and more EDA compliant. With that said, I go yes.
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 President Morales.
Yes, I just wanted to reaffirm what Ms. Diamond mentioned. When we passed our balanced budget amendment here a few years ago, it, it simply said to the public that we cannot spend any more than we're receiving. And that's basically what we're, what we're, we've attempted to do here tonight. And I think that, and what we can see, this is, we, we're following the rules and the, and the law that we, we actually legislated here at this city council. My vote is absolutely yes.
And item two is the bond ordinance authorizing various capital projects in and for the city of Long Beach, Castle County, New York. Stating the estimated total cost there over $14,973,000. Appropriating said amount therefore and including the expenditure of $5,525,950 expected to be received in state and federal aid, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $14,973,000 bonds of said city to finance and appropriation. Do you want to introduce the lead option to the side?
I'll introduce Bendel.
I will.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Our third item this evening is the public hearing for the purpose of giving citizens an adequate opportunity, homemakers, N Ws, on the general story of the proposed operating budget for the year July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018.
Okay, we did a full presentation on the operating budget at the last council meeting. I will not repeat the entire presentation. I will simply give a very short, raised hints and talk about more importantly perhaps, what's, what's new. So quickly, in review, we have a cost to continue budget this year, where we produced requested budget expenditures by $2 million. We have merged our fiscal and physical recovery, which has generated $7.2 million back to the city's rainy day fund to date. A big thank you goes to CSEA for working with us to do projects in-house to make that happen. As a result, we're also able to transfer $1 million from the FEMA fund to the general fund to provide tax relief this year. Speaking of CSEA, the, the new eight-year agreement generates $440,000 in savings this year. We have management contributing to healthcare, which contributes $48,000 in savings. Our bond rating improvements, $200,000 in savings. Workforce re-alignment and annuals, $2 million in savings. We have, we see $2.3 million in grant revenues this year and we appropriate a total of $720,000 from our fund balance to pay for the debt service on the deficit financing. So a simple way of looking at that is that a judicious use of our surplus will pay again this year and in the past early years with the previous administration's deficit. So all of that adds up to a smart recovery for the city, which allows us to stay again within the tax cap this year of 1.26. So let's talk about what is new in front of us this evening. At the request of City Council, who's Councilman Member Mandell, asked us to take another look. And I would congratulate our budget team for working hard, not only throughout the budget process, but in the interim. We see before us this evening, a proposal to reduce the proposed water and sewer rate increase from 2% down to 1%, which is an average savings of $18 per household. We have a very simple amendment package before us this evening regarding the general fund, the sum total of which reduces the, the total budget by $4,584. And I guess that's the, the quick overview of, of what's, what's going on.
Okay. Now, I just want to bring everyone's attention to this little flyer that our city manager agreed from. The figures are here for you to take and to look at and to, and of course, if you have any questions, we, we welcome them. The other thing is that of course, this, this has been a very difficult task to stay within the, the tax cap that we've, that we're challenged to do. And we've been able to do that. And we've been able to do that and still continue to move forward with the development of our city and the, and the recovery of our city. We know that some things have been slower than others and we, we do realize that we're as concerned as you are about utilities and the shorelines and, you know, the fact that we're coming, you know, again, another storm season is coming and, you know, we are on a barrier island. And, and yeah, we are, we're concerned. So we are gonna keep pushing for monies that we know that, or we can try to get to be able to do these projects.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. I would just add, sorry, I'm remiss. I would just want to mention a couple of quick thank yous. You know, a lot of work went into the original draft. A lot of work has gone into always finding some little places for improvement. I want to thank the budget team. I also want to thank the city council for working collaboratively as part of the process. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the city council was part of the process, you know, asked to forego their cost of living increases here, which is a, you know, the significance of all this.
And, okay, are there any comments from the council on the second item? Okay. Are there any comments from the public on the second? Yes, yes, Mr. Ronald, sure.
So I was very pleased to see the New York State Comptroller's audit, I suppose, of our budget. And there were a couple of items on there we just wanted to ask about. One of them I've talked about with you, Christie, but I think for clarification purposes, it would be good to discuss with the public. In terms of the beach charges, that we haven't realized part of it because the, the, our beach season cuts our budget season in half.
Right. So a large part of our beach revenue comes in the May-June months, especially because May is when we sell all of our annual beach passes. So all the revenue. So we see over $2 million in May-June alone. So you only see about a little less than half of what we expect for this year, year to date through, through, through March. It only really encompasses July, August, and a little bit of September that the beaches open. And then A, we'll be able to say push for the annual passes. And then B, of course, June, when we start opening after Memorial Day. So we see revenue there. So that is normal. It happens every year.
Okay. And, and the other, the other part I wanted to do is on the, the New York State Comptroller talked about overtime. And I just want to know what kind of controls we have. And I, I mean, I know it's cheaper for us to pay out overtime rather than hiring new employees. But how are we controlling that? And that seems to be one of the expenses that is more difficult to control. But what are we doing to try and control it?
Well, the first thing we've tried to do this year is to look at a more realistic budget, which is what, one of the, one of New York State's conferences. We have in front as far as they think we should go, but we also have to be realistic as far as what, you know, the city can afford to put on its budget as well. And we have to put controls in. So we tasked each department last year to give us a service detail where they outline detail by detail what event, what item, as far as everything they use overtime for, even to the point of telling us whether it's their upper management level that, that actually puts in the overtime, if it's their, you know, their lower level entry level employees that put in the overtime so we can average out an hourly rate and really truly project out what the overtime would be. This, that was last year. It was definitely a learning experience for everybody. And this year, we actually went one step further and met one-on-one with the department heads and went through all of that and revamped and whatnot. So we really do feel that our projections this year reflect doing that. But as far as overtime controls, barring emergency reasons, of course, we do request that all overtime is a request and approved and revamped. So it first goes from the department head to their commissioner. And then it comes from me to, you know, to determine funding and then it goes to Jack ultimately to determine whether that makes sense and is reasonable. And, and so at all levels in that process, it's questioned and, you know, looked at. So the fact that it is looked at, also makes the department necessarily realize that, okay, I'm going to be asked questions. Maybe I'm only using overtime for what I actually needed for. The other piece of overtime that New York State questions especially are our, our fire department. So with the restructuring and a little bump that we dealt with regarding that, we had to adjust to the overtime budget because there was a little bit of litigation associated with restructuring and things of that nature. Together, Rob and I worked with the fire department union management this year and we did actually put a new agreement into place, which caps certain overtimes, certain overtime buckets. And it also, they also gave some givebacks where certain overtime earned would actually be earned in time versus cash paid out. So between those two pieces, we really feel that we put the fire department overtime in a more reasonable track and we've budgeted for that more.
Just wanted to make a, a quick general comment on the, the annual state comptroller's budget review. Just as a reminder, I guess it was four years ago when the city went through the deficit financing process, there was discussion of, you know, what does that look like? What does it come with? And one of the things that we highlighted that it comes with is an annual budget review, which we welcome as a, as a positive, you know, helpful step to budget process. And candidly, I think the feeling was, you know, for a city that had gotten itself in the level of fiscal trouble and distress that City of Long Beach had been in, in 2011, that, that's a healthy, healthy piece. So from our perspective, I think we're really gratified that again, for the fourth year, the state comptroller had a quoting, quote, "Found that the significant revenue and expenditure projections in the proposed budget are reasonable." And that, you know, that's, we've gone through this process now exhaustingly and we've come out pretty good. We're, we're quite, you know, proud of that.
Yeah, savings sometimes is, is very painful and particularly if, if at one point we didn't have the controls on these things. And, and it is painful. It's painful for all of us. But we're avoiding, you know, a downward rating by moody's by doing what we're doing. And we will continue to, to streamline things as we go forward. Two extra questions, Mr. Ronald. Thank you so much. Any other comments on the council? Any comments from the public? Yes, sir. Welcome. Glad you're here. And we just need your name to the record.
Sure. Bill Dodge with the president of Long Beach COA. Just two observations on the budget. One was, the budget was characterized as a cost to continue budget. But then later on the presentation, you added a 1% increase for the exempts. Now, the exempts work hard. They're certainly intensive increases. But they're not contract employees. In fact, the only exempt that can have a contract is Mr. Schneur. So it's not exactly the accurate to call it a cost to continue budget. The second point is, three times in the last meeting, you brought up, Mr. Schneur brought up the previous administration's deficit. That was a very important thing, a previous administration's deficit. In fact, it was brought up again today. However, the budget that you're presenting right now doesn't include any provisions for a COA that's without a contract for nine years, a PBA that's without a contract for two years, and a fire department that's without a contract for seven years. So that's 18 years of pending contracts that what essentially is happening is we are going to have the next administration saying, that's the previous administration's deficit. So it's just an observation that that wasn't really clear in the presentation that was brought forward. But there will be 18 years of deficit that move forward because they haven't acted on those three contracts. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Thank you. Thank you for that comment. Any other comments on item number two on our, the budget? And again, the authorization that we need to have for it. Yes, sir. Welcome, welcome. I didn't realize who you are.
My name's Michael Delory. Six, two, walk.
Yes.
I have some handouts to give to the council. Just, they're labeled on top. This is mine. I did contact Ms. Hightower well in advance to give her my commentary, my questions. It's in detail. So I believe she's answered some of them, but I'd like to just review it with you. And these may be redundant, but here goes. And the page double references are on the left up top. So I think it may be a conversation with Ms. Hightower, myself and the city manager. But department income, there's like a $665,000 increase in line item 0012. but department income, there's like a $665,000 increase in line item 0012. Could you basically summarize what that is? Is that increase in permit fees or is it increase in, both the old ones?
Yeah.
Okay. Licenses and permits revised, 1617 budget was increased by a year of $4,000 on sale, fine slash sale of property. I don't know if it's a sale or fine, if you could just summarize that. Line item 0027, same page miscellaneous, a $92,000 increase, which is 16.3%, what's expected. State aid, same page 98, some of which are highlighted. Hopefully the highlights came out under your copies. Information technology, it's page 98. So a lot of these questions are on page 98, which is the detail. Another question I have is the lifeguard budget. Their requested amount is 152,500 higher. In other words, they requested a higher amount than what's in the proposed budget. Is there any particular request that was either postponed, denied, reviewed, or just said we don't need it, maybe covered under something else? The McNoia daycare, it's 420,000, is $70,722 higher. My overall question is, the MLK Center had a budget item, and if you look forward, that may have been incorporated into another item in the budget. Am I limited to three minutes? Okay. You all have a copy of what my ass, what I'm asking. There's a sale of real property for $600,000. It's not recognized yet. When will it be? What was the contract? What's the property? Things like that. Page two, I didn't get a chance to get to, and hopefully you'll, you'll have a chance to answer some of them. Thank you very much, thank you for your time, and thank you for the hard work that went into this budget.
Thank you for coming up and sharing these questions.
Thank you, Mike, thank you for the thoughtful questions. Thank you for this.
Okay, Mr. President, Ms. Hightower?
So the first line that you mentioned, the department's income, the $665,000 increase, the majority of that is the state area system, that commissioner's advocate gets looking to, that's $600,000 of the increase. The balance is small increases in other charges like ambulance and bus fares and things like that. The fines of property, the, I think the current budget was increased $800,000 was the question. That is directly related to an insurance settlement procured by Corporation Council related to same damages.
Right.
That's what that is. The miscellaneous revenue that went up $92,000, these sources tend to change from year to year, so every year we have some go on, some come off. So it's really just a difference between the different ones that are coming off and coming on. The state aid one, so yes, we do expect over 4.1 million through the end of the year, which was, which was your question. We receive over 95% of our annual per capita income from the aid from the state, which is 3.1 million of that. The balance of that is we, we only see the first quarter of mortgage tax from the state before March 21st, and we, we receive the last three quarters within the next six months from, from March. That and our New York State bus operation subsidy is what makes up the difference of the 4.1 million dollars. Your question on the lifeguards, their request reflected the cost of keeping on the full patrol, which is something that we had tried last year. Jack, obviously you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I was with that. Real quick, after speaking with the chief as well as the beach park folks, we, the recommendation was not to extend the hours late to the night this year, that the costs, that it costs in terms of running the beach park later in the evening didn't make sense. And so what the lifeguards need to do is they're going to run a crew later in the evenings, but we're not going to officially have the beaches open. So that $150,000 would have kept the beaches open later in the evening.
To answer your question on the increase in the McNoia department, that, that definitely is a transcript of full-time employees from the MLK Center. They were split between McNoia and Division Services. But the balance of the MLK budget is now in Recreation Department. So they took over managing of the facility, so they took off on all the expenses related to gas, electric, food supplies, maintenance, things of that nature, but uses family and McNoia took on the staff associated from them.
Okay.
And then the last, your other question was the sale of real property. Jack, obviously you want to speak to that. Okay. So we had budgeted a sale of real property with an analysis, we had brought in a company to do analysis on citywide property. Turns out that the properties we were looking at in this current budget year are not in sound condition and the cost to get them there would pursue anything we've been making on selling it. So that will not be realized this year and in turn, we have removed it from the budget for next year. CBR has, it has been tasked with finding other opportunities for the city, but until they're recognized and we feel that it is realizable, they will be included in the budget.
So that, that has been removed from the budget?
Yes, it has for this fiscal year, yes.
Okay. Okay, very good. And Mr. Delory, thank you, thank you so much for those excellent questions.
I just have one last follow-up. Page 100, first page, beach charges.
Okay, all right, I'm afraid your time has expired and, and again, we appreciate your help. You can see us at the end of the meeting and we'll follow up with them.
Chris, you adjust the beach card number.
Sure, absolutely. So your question had been whether the 1516 increase was specifically related to the rate increase and is actually a cheap part. So partially it was from the rate increase on the annual beach passes, but the other piece of it was that we had a record attended year in 2016. It was one of the hottest summers on record, so it's, it's really a combination of the two. And as far as pride, there was nothing in this year's budget because we did not know that pride was going to happen when we did last year's budget. However, we do expect about $200,000 of beach charge revenue to, to, to get, and that allows for about half of the people to buy a beach pass on one of the days. It wouldn't be conservative budgeting to assume everybody coming to pride was going to buy a beach pass on both days.
But that would be this fiscal year?
That would be this fiscal year, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. Excellent questions that we have on the, on the budget. Are there any other comments from the public on this item number two? I'm sorry, from the three, we're up two. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to our next, but, item. We're going to take a vote on the, or write a motion at this point. Ah, okay, good point, okay. Okay, yeah, I, I make a motion to move to amend the budget at this point.
I'll second it.
Seconded, okay. Very good.
So this is just on the motion to amend?
This is just up there. Motion to amend.
This is just a motion to amend?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
So item number three is a resolution authorizing the adoption of the operating budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017 and ending June 30th, 2018, appropriating some set forth theremin determining and fixing the real estate tax levy. Introduce who moved the adoption of this item as amended.
I'll introduce that.
For a second?
I will.
All right, councilman.
First, I just want to thank the budget team and there were numerous meetings that took place and it's clear once you review the budget that quite a bit of effort went into putting it together. I also want to commend the other council members on some of the modifications that went into it and the errand sheet that was passed, including the removal of wages increases for the council members and increases that are included for others as well. I believe that the budget is fair and balanced and continues to maintain the important services that we offer to the residents of the city. I'm happy to see that steps were taken to hold the line on overtime increases as well as increase the accountability in terms of who and when and where overtime is provided. It's a, we've worked hard to ensure that we can do more with less in this budget and I think it's clear that it limits the impact on our taxpayers as well. So with that, I vote yes.
First, I just want to say how pleased I am that we have every year this annual budget review on the state comptroller's office. I think it's an incredible opportunity to have additional eyes and double check on what we do. I welcome it. Second, I also wanted to congratulate and thank the budget team. They did a tremendous job in striking the balance between rising costs and the civic obligations while keeping the residents and businesses in mind to maintain the services that we pride ourselves on because we have the best city workforce anywhere. And so we've got a very happy move, yes, on this budget.
More?
Yes, once again, I just want to commend the budget team for their hard work. As stated here, I think it's smart recovery and smart recovery is all about making fiscally sound decisions as it relates to the budget. Smart recovery is giving the residents access to this information within the spirit of transparency and smart recovery is also making the attempt to reduce the burden on the taxpayers. And so I believe we successfully did that this year and I'm very proud to, to move forward with this budget. Having said that, I hope that we'll continue to move forward and fight hard to keep the, the tax costs relatively small for our residents, to reduce and relieve the burden, but also to continue to move forward with the spirit of accountability within our tech, within our workforce and to find creative ways to move forward with evaluations because evaluation is critical with respect to, to accountability. So with that, I say yes.
Mr. President, we're all.
I too would like to thank the budget team for all their hard work, Sherry and Christie and of course Jack. You know, we do talk about a cost to continue and the cost to continue, the way I read the budget is actually would be a 6% tax increase to just continue the services and the quality of life we had last year. So to get it down to 1.26, I commend all the department heads and the CSCA for really negotiating a contract with the messages of our residents in mind. And we will, as a council and administration, I'm sure, continue to fight to keep our taxes low, to maintain our quality of life, but also continue to provide the services that our residents expect and deserve. With that, I vote yes.
Well, I can't really add anymore to the comments that the council has made because they're, they're right on target. I can only add that anytime we stay within the tax cap and we get a little refund from the state, boy, that feels good when you get that check. And I, I think that this is something we look forward to again. Thank you, Dan, my vote is absolutely yes.
To the rest of the regular calendar, item four is a resolution delegating to the city comptroller of the city of Long Beach, Nassau County, New York, powers to authorize the issuance of $6 million, $800,000 tax anticipation notes of said city or so much thereof as may be necessary in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017, and to prescribe the terms for and contents and provide for the sale and credit enhancement of such notes.
Okay, so switching gears from the operating budget to recovery funding, we, this is a conversation that we have had before. So Long Beach's Superstorm Sandy Recovery Effort has spanned almost five years to date with expenses totaling over $121 million and related reimbursements totaling almost $116, I'm sorry, $106 million, just as a reminder to everyone, as we all found out, the FEMA process works as a reimbursement process, they don't generally upfront give the money. So the city originally issued as part of financing that recovery, a $33 million revenue anticipation note to provide funding for the recovery effort. That grant is partially paid down in July 15th and fully retired in June 16th from direct reimbursements received from FEMA. In order to continue the recovery effort, this issue, the city issued a $10.43 million grant in September of 2014. See them steadily, obviously getting smaller. This, what we hope is our last time around with this, is a 6, $6.8 million short-term cash flow note will allow the city to continue recovery efforts and retire our revenue anticipation note as required by New York State Finance Law. And conservatively, funds associated with this note are expected to be received within the next eight to 10 months. So this is, as was reminded to me earlier today, a helpful way of thinking about it in terms of being homeowners, this is a one-time short-term life credit as we hopefully finish this process out.
Okay, just to, for clarity's sake, one of, one of the things that I know that I had a learning curve with regard to budget was understanding the tax anticipation notes and understanding the revenue anticipation notes and what that means to borrow on a short-term basis at the lowest possible interest that we can because we as a municipality must continue to have these services brought to the public without going into, you know, over debt. And of course, as the money comes in from the revenue and the taxes, we then pay these loans off. So that's an important concept for the public to see, that these are short-term loans as we generate the tax and we generate the revenue to pay them off. Very important. Are there any comments from the council on item number four? Any comments from the public on the, on the floor? Any clarity? Yes. Gus, how are you, sir? And welcome. We just need the name, your name for the record.
Sure, J. Gusler. I'm just sitting here listening to this and don't want to be, we, we have this rainy day fund, I've heard it mentioned a couple times and I've heard it mentioned in the past. What kind of money do we have sitting around in that rainy day fund, if we know? Good question.
So in the fiscal year in 2016, it was all in about $9.4 million. But I understand that rainy day fund doesn't represent cash, it represents assets either owned to the city or to the city, doesn't necessarily represent cash.
So it's a hypothetical number on our ledger that is not something that we can tap into, for instance, in this situation where we're going out and borrowing? And granted, we may be getting a very fair rate of interest, but we're going out and borrowing nevertheless and we're going to pay back more than the money we're borrowing. And we have to do this because we can't avail ourselves of these rainy day funds for the short period of time that we're talking about for this note?
This is considered a cash flow note, which only allows us to borrow up to a certain point of available cash. So city has used whatever available cash it has before it takes on any type of debt like that. So it's already taken into account as a number.
All right, so that, that rainy day fund, for lack of a better term, it's, it's impossible to use those funds for the purposes that we're borrowing this money for?
It's not impossible, it's just not necessarily true because you don't have any available for emergency.
Okay.
Yeah, the other thing, Mr. Gusler, is it's very important that when we have a rainy day fund, we're able to borrow at a, at a better rate because of that.
Well, it seems to me like we're having a liquidity crisis, otherwise we wouldn't be looking to borrow this money. And if a liquidity crisis, that's what you have rainy day funds for, at least that's the way it works in my household, but you guys might have a different approach than I.
Thank you, Mr. Gusler, good to see you. Any other comments on item number four? Okay, and with that, folks, we're going to move on to our next item. Thank you, I'd like to hear your comments, everyone.
I have filed a resolution authorizing the city manager to intend to renew the operation of additional food trucks with the city's beach concessions.
Okay, it's the city's desire to continue to provide a wide variety of food and refreshment concessions in convenient locations, great diversity of food choices, excellent quality foods with a local flavor while showing preference to local food merchants and/or those who have previously provided food services. We had, over the, over the last year, I think we lost one of the food trucks and we had some additional interest, so we did another RFP and have three new to award this year.
Great, great. We don't have a decision yet on, on who the awards.
Yep, we have it here.
Oh, great.
We have a, a company called Taquaria, which I believe is the same owners as Corso de Cuba, with a menu different than their other truck. We have a Snowy Long Island, which is a snow-cold shaved ice, and Pork Chops Catering Company for steak and cheese.
Okay, are there any comments from the council? Cheese steak.
Cheese steak.
Cheese steak, yeah. Okay, we look forward to these food trucks, folks. We, we love food here. Any comments from the?
I have an assessment question with respect to the food, it sounds really good right now. My question is, do we have an updated assessment with respect to its impact on the local restaurants on Park Avenue?
An assessment? I mean, generally.
Some kind of assessment in terms of its impact on?
I, I don't know that there's a way to do an assessment except to say that the overwhelming majority of the folks who are running food trucks own restaurants on Park Avenue. majority of the folks who are running food trucks own restaurants on Park Avenue.
I know, but we... No, I'm aware of that, but I'm just saying, in terms of, do we have anything with data? Is what is the impact? Because our focus is economic development, but we just want to make sure that we've done too diligent.
I don't know, you know, it's a great question, I don't know how you calculate, you know, restaurant data from restaurants.
Any other comments from the council on this item? Any comments from the public now on this? Yes, please forward. Mr. Miles. See, I ducked my glasses so I can see from far away now. I actually ducked them today, Mr. Miles, so I can see what's coming up. Welcome. We just need your name for the record, it's good to see you.
Good evening, Ronnie Miles. I also love to eat and love food, so I have a couple questions about the food trucks. Are there only going to be that one location this year?
Yes, there's the Riverside Market, right? And other than that, I think we've got everything from last year coming back.
Okay, when we put out the RFP, do we consider the MWBEs in that?
I don't know that a...
It's only for projects over a certain threshold, right?
Oh, I would like some ethnic food, so I mean...
Yeah, I think we all want the greatest possible diversity of food, right? That's the whole point.
Yes, I want pizza, I want jerk, I want it all.
I like dumplings, buddy. I'm still waiting for a dumpling.
The MWBE are, for the most part, projects over the $100,000 limit, but also, just for the record, I had this conversation last week, and we talked about having more access to information with respect to the RFP, so in the future, obviously because you have some potential community people who are interested in this project, you'll have the information in advance.
Well, thank you for keeping Long Beach at it.
Okay, thank you again, thank you for your comments. Any other comments, folks, on this item? The fifth item here on the agenda tonight. With that, folks, we're going to move on to our next and last item.
I have signed a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of ordinance, meant code ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding water distribution. This item is a publication only, and here it will be held June 6th at 7:00 PM. Item number four, which is a resolution delegated to the city controller of the city of Long Beach, Nassau County, New York, powers to authorize the issuance of $6 million, $800,000 tax anticipation notes of said city, or so much thereof as may be necessary in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017, and to prescribe the terms, form, and contents, and provide for the sale and credit enhancement of such notes. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
Oh.
I will.
All right, that's been done.
Yes.
That's been manned out.
Yes.
President Moore?
Yes.
President Torres?
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter two agreements for the operation of additional food trucks at the city's beach concessions. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second? All right, that's been done.
Yes.
That's been manned out.
Yes.
President Moore?
Yes.
President Torres?
Yes.
And item six is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of ordinance, meant code ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding the water distribution. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I'll introduce that.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, that's been done.
Yes.
That's been manned out.
Yes.
President Moore?
Yes.
President Torres?
Yes.
Would you like to motion to both of you?
I will.
Second?
I will.
All right, that's been done.
Yes.
That's been manned out.
Yes.
Yes.
President Moore?
Yes.
Yes, folks, that ends our city council meeting, now we enter the good and welfare portion of our meeting. And again, I just want to remind everyone that, again, we needed to have the forms submitted to us to be able to participate. We do want to hear from you, and this is why we ask that you fill these forms out, so that during good and welfare, we can hear what is on your mind. And for us, that's how good government works, that we hear what you have to say. And of course, we have to stick to our three-minute rule, and again, we expect the right decorum that you would expect. Our first person is Mr. Dodge, Bill Dodge.
Oh, wonderful. Okay.
Phil, very nice to talk to you again. Bill Dodge, Long Beach COF. I'd like to continue my discussion from the last meeting, we talked about some of these confidential settlements that were made by the city. And the one I'd like to talk about today was signed on March 29th of 2016. It offered an employee here who had alleged some pretty horrific acts, $85,000 in cash, and we heard last meeting, this was an excellent deal for the city, that the settlement of these was excellent. Well, part of the agreement also included things that that member didn't have to appear at work anymore, yet continues to collect A paycheck, and that will continue through December of 2018. That seems to be a little more than the $25,000 that the intent of that law was, but he continues to approve sick time, personal time, terminal leave time. There were some other interesting sections that were in that agreement. One was that the city agrees to waive the application of the general municipal law, section 208D, extra work by members, they're waiving the law. The city waives any firearm qualifications for this individual, but allows him to continue to carry a firearm through 2018. The city agrees to waive the application of the public officer's law in the event that Hayes takes up residence in contravention of the law. So now my question is, how much overtime is necessary to fill a no-show job for two years? It's two years, a police sergeant for two years. Hayes, last year in 2016, made $181,863 without walking through the door. How many other low or no-show jobs have been offered as a result of such, how many are out there? This was confidential, had we not changed some information, it's like we would have known, Hayes couldn't talk about it, and nobody up here did talk about it, anybody that knew, so we didn't know. That's the question, how many other low or no-show jobs are there within the city, other than the one that we're bringing up now?
You know, I don't know how you define no-show job, but I can tell you this, with respect to Paul Hayes, he did settle for $85,000, and how much did the city pay? Zero.
I agree, it was a wonderful deal for the city. Given the acts that were realized, I think it was a spectacular deal. The city did very, the city did very well. Please don't miss on this question. I agree 100% that you did an excellent job in mitigating the damage from these allegations, absolutely.
Okay, so the city paid...
But the question is, how much did the city spend to fill in for an employee that wasn't here? There is another cost.
I don't have access to that.
Of course, that should be outside the scope.
With respect to his use of time, as you also know from having all of the settlement agreements, Mr. Hayes agreed that he is going to remain a resident of New York State and paying New York State taxes during his absence, when he's in Texas, taking care of his wife, who has, I believe, stage three cancer, that's why he's there. And by the way, the city, as you know, is too calculated of his time himself...
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't do anything that I did when I'm working and discuss that.
But as we all know, he's basically forfeited almost his entire payout, which is worth probably between $400,000 and $500,000 because of his use of time. So the city does realize substantial savings in that respect. As far as your question with respect to specific budget information, you know, I'm not associated with that.
Well, the question for the council and city manager is, how much did it cost to fill in for that person that wasn't here? Yes, for him, that was a reasonable thing, but that's still a body that's not here, that's still an individual that doesn't make arrests, supervise employees, he's not here, and it was a good deal for all involved, but somebody's filling that in, and how many others are?
We just passed a budget with respect to smart recovery, so is there anyone that, within the budget team, that can actually answer that question? This is a serious allegation that I'm hearing right now, and I'd like some clarification. I mean, the whole purpose is, I believe that we're not having people who are actually not showing up to work, and we're paying for them, so I'm just, I'm a little concerned right now.
Well, he's using his accrued time, I mean, he's entitled to use it, we've just simply allowed him to use it, we did extensive research before, it's had more research than I've ever seen proceeding in settlement agreements, that confirms his legal eligibility to use that time. So this is not a no-show job, he's using his earned time, and he's forfeiting his payout, so there's a trade-off there.
Okay, so the second piece, I guess, because I'm trying to interpret what's being said, so are you saying that someone is waiving, that we as a city are waiving the law itself as it's presented, so that this can actually take place? Is that what I'm hearing?
There are two specific sections in the agreement that say exactly that. The city further agrees to waive the application of general municipal law, section 208D, entitled "extra work" by the members of the police force, to Hayes, and Hayes may engage in extra work, and it goes on from there. That is the wording of the agreement for that particular one, and he's not engaged in any actual work that he's been doing. And number two, with respect to the residency requirements, again, Mr. Hayes has been taxed in New York State, so I haven't done it in March, though I, although there are personal income taxes in Texas, so, you know, by most definitions, the parent is a New York State resident, while he gets scared of his wife and taxes for his cancer. Now, not at the time of the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge.
Thank you.
Very interesting case, and also I agree with Ms. Morris, important to find out what's going on here. And thank you for bringing that up.
I do appreciate you taking the time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dodge, thank you, thank you. Our next person is Ms. Mindy Delberg. I think I said it right this time?
He said.
Ah, thank you, thanks. Okay, welcome, Ms. Delberg.
It's okay, I hope you're okay there.
I'm okay. Okay, how's everybody?
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to speak about two different things. Since Ms. Diamond said that the city of Long Beach is becoming ADA compliant, which literally makes my heart sing, I wanted to speak about, there's a line in the budget about there snow will be $255,000, which is really wonderful, but I have pictures, which I've sent to you guys, of handicap spots with snow in them, which is not a very good thing. So I will, I took pictures, it happened multiple times this winter, it's happened so many other winters, and now that I speak to you guys, I will make sure that I send you guys the pictures, so seeing that line, that $255,000 is happening, we need to make sure that we have, next winter, there was no snow in any handicap parking spot ever again, okay? Okay, that just upsets me to no end, to be honest. But also, with the city becoming ADA compliant, I wanted to know if there's something could be done about the restaurants being, having all of the bathrooms that do have handicap restaurant, I mean, handicap bathrooms, if they all can be ADA compliant, because they are not. Some of them, I don't, they're business owners, try, they're just not, and as being somebody that is, whether or not you're, whether you have chronic pain, whether you, my girlfriend just had a bonyectomy, and she's been on crutches for eight weeks, and she's complaining, and people get knee surgeries, it is just not, this is a bony ADA compliant city, I think the restaurants need to be ADA compliant in every aspect, whether they have railings on the wall, whether, something just needs to be done. You guys just need to know about it. I don't know if there could be a law, or ordinance, or with something.
It's certainly something we could locate too.
Yeah, I mean, and the list, it's in the evidence of disabilities, it's a difficult situation, because it's a private action against a private owner.
Right.
But there are, you know, there are ways the city can work, you know, with businesses that are required to, if we ever get a list.
If you ever get a list?
If we get a list of businesses that we are not compliant, there are certainly discussions the city can have there.
It's not, it's all of them. Have I been to every single restaurant? Yes. Have they all, have I been struggling in every single restaurant? Yes. I mean, is this embarrassing to say? Absolutely. But you know what? Am I the only one? No, I'm not the only one. Am I the one standing here talking to you about it? Absolutely. I just think that if we're going to say that the city's ADA compliant, then I think we need to say we're ADA compliant in every aspect. The beach, the restaurants, everywhere, the parking, the parking spots, everywhere.
Certainly, this point will take him.
Thank you.
I totally, I totally agree with you, just access in general should be a critical priority. I also feel that at some point, we should have conversations about having some more of an advisory committee with residents, coupled with officers within our city, to have conversations and to move forward with education as well as awareness, but also compliance.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delberg. Certainly, a very good point that you're making.
Thank you.
We will follow up with that too. Again, if you welcome all these comments, it's very important for us. Ms. Mary Golovitch, if you're still here?
Yes.
For your pass, okay. Well, move on to Frances. Hello, Ms. Anderson. Good to see you.
Thank you. Frances, W. Mooreland Street, I just have a question regarding the plastic bag ordinance. I should have thought about it then, but I didn't, but now that we're in the season where we're having all these festival and fairs, I have a question. Is there a provision in the ordinance for vendors of all the different groups that are coming into the city to comply with our plastic bag laws?
I think Ryan is our resident expert in the ordinance. I believe in everyone.
And how, and if there is, how will be more specific?
Excellent question. This is Ryan Geerney.
Yes, hello, council. So there is no specific provision in the law, but the recreation department, who handles all the events and vendors that go along with it, is aware and makes aware, makes the vendors aware of our ordinance, and any business providing the goods to customers has to follow the ordinance as it's stated in law.
Yeah, what I find interesting, Ms. Anderson, is that every time that I purchase something, the store owner says to me, if you take the plastic bag, I'll have to charge you the five cents. And of course, I don't take the plastic bag. So I think that we do see some, at least some compliance here, certainly my experience has been that way.
I think it's working. I mean, there's always going to be people that are going to complain, but I think in general, people are, you know, compliant, I don't think that people want to pay for a plastic bag, it's not about the five cents, I think it's more about the awareness, and that's really, I think, what your law was about in the first place. But if possible, if you could possibly amend the law to think about, because when we have all these fairs, there's a lot of people buying a lot of things, and I just think that if there's a possibility to amend that and enforce that, that would be good. So, thank you.
We could also include in the language of the actual publicity announcements with respect to the fairs, that people should just remind people to bring their bags. We can do that right away.
That's great, thank you, thank you.
Good point. Okay, and thank you, Ms. Anderson. We have Dina Fury. Phil, this Fury?
My Liz.
Welcome again.
Hello again, how are you? Two, just two things, last time, one of the last times I was here, we spoke about the boat launch and lighting up the boat launch, now that we're coming into more of a boating season, I would ask if that really be looked at, as I said, it gets very dark even at night, and even though the launch might be closed after dark, or be closing at eight or nine o'clock, it's still a point for emergency use, in the event that somebody has issues, so there should be some beacon of some sort to know that it's a boat, that's number one. Number two, my other favorite subject is to talk about the boards, so...
I want to just just imagine, so we took a look particularly at the recreation board which you applied for, there's only one other person other than you who's applied, it's a seven-member board, so we're kind of in an awkward spot, we don't have enough people yet, but, you know, we'll go through the process and try to, if you can help us improve more, we love it.
Well, I think that, I think that, again, it goes back, this is going back to this Well, I think that, I think that again, it goes back, this is going back to this probably number of people who may have felt that they lost the time slot. We were supposed to be doing this back in October, November. And it may have gotten past the holidays to do it. We are seven months past when we first said it. I don't, I don't believe that again, and you know, I have, this is a conversation of enough people are aware of those boards as a whole. And it's not just recreation. I don't believe, I know that people have applied to other positions, whether it be architectural review boards, or ethics boards, or any of the other boards. I don't believe that there's ever really been a full-on, a full-on, you know, process to give notification to the people. I know we talk about it a lot. And I, I'm not disagreeing that you don't try to communicate as best as possible. But when they, when those are very important boards or positions to have, we did a great job, I have to tell you, being away on vacation. I got more phone calls, text messages about beach passes being going on sale. But we have more boards here that should be replaced. And, and people who should actually be holding sessions, having meetings regarding on these boards, that kind of stuff is not getting done. And I think they should be independent. And I think that if you put, if you need to put somebody, if you said it, there's only two of us. If you tell me I need to fill seven positions or get seven other people to join the board, I'll do that. We can do that. And I'm sure that there are other, other boards like that who will do the same. I mean, when you look at the list, I'll go back. I know somebody who's on the architectural review board who thinks he's not on the architectural review board. But that, that tells me that we haven't yet. Those, those boards have not met. So it's purpose, it's not certainly the purpose they're intended to be. And I, and again, I go back, it's seven months since we talked about it. There's stuff that we can do. And I'd like to say thank you, the clock has arrived. They haven't installed it yet, but, you know, check on them now and then. But there are things that can get done if, if the right people are kind of involved. So I would ask that if we go through that process again and, and get people out there for those boards.
We will continue to, to request applications. And we will work.
Ms. Fury, thank you. Good, good suggestion. Our next person is Mr. Lou Duba. Mr. Duba, good evening again.
At that meeting last week, I think the city called about iStar.
Yes.
There are all sorts of things that are said about it, things that are written in the paper. It seems to me at this point, if correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know whether you can answer it, that you guys are being put under arrest with the threat of a $104 million lawsuit if you don't sign on to iStar, to, to agree to have iStar be granted, to, that the pilot be granted to iStar. It's a very strange situation because it sounds like, you know, you guys are being forced into saying that you agreed to have the pilot program. If not, you're going to be sued for $102, $104 million. I don't know whether there's comments on that. I don't know whether that is legal for them to do because it's like signing a contract with someone putting a gun to your head. It sounds like they are putting a gun to the city of Long Beach. Is there anything you can comment about it? And again, I realize there's all this legal stuff that's going on with it, but is there any comments?
There were a hundred and five, but.
All right. God, we're just believing here and there, you know?
It's just like, it's really just not advisable, given the stakes in this litigation, for anybody in the council to speak on that topic. Sorry, it's just not advisable, given the stakes now that everybody's aware. So the cat's out of the bag in, in regard to what's at stake in this litigation. It's just simply not advisable for the council to comment on that, at least at this time.
Right, I understand. Actually, there was an interesting editorial Tuesday today saying that they started at $125 million for a pilot that went to $105.
$129, $109 to $82.
$82. And initially, they said when they had their application before the zoning board, that they got money, they're ready to go, shuttle ready to go. And so, you know, I think, I know that's not part of the zoning board's view to say what they have money or not. But they obviously started off not telling the truth about this whole thing. So I just.
Everybody's aware of this at the point of testimony. And all I can say is it's going to factor in the litigation should be filed. So again, it's something that we really can't discuss and make prejudiced in case.
Okay, I just.
In case that large, we can't risk prejudice in.
I kind of thought that was going to be the answer, but I feel that it should be brought out in public. That is just not, you know.
And just, and remember also, it is the IDAs that ultimately want whether or not to grant the request, the request for payment.
Right. And they're going to all another public hearing, if you're willing?
That's what they said in the media, that's the first we heard about it.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duba. It was, it was a pleasure to have you come. Mr. Jay Gussel. Hey, Jay.
Good evening, Jay Gussel. I was also here a week ago and heard the whole iStar informational session, whatever you call it. And I guess it could be summarized that the city is contemplating capitulating to iStar's request for a more firm show of support out of fear of litigation with iStar. That accurate?
Again, Jay, no one's, no one's any comment on it or where or another. The stakes it's just set, we're delighted.
I'm summarizing what I think the city's voice.
It's a rhetorical question.
Okay, well, all right, that's fine. Nevertheless, I personally have two situations that I'm involved in with the city where I've communicated in unequivocal terms my intentions to sue the city. Granted, I'm not iStar, I'm not granting you guys $105 million. I don't have, you know, white shoe law firms on speed dial. But I'm going to be suing the city. Mr. Agostis should probably be a defendant in one of those. Means city not to be able to represent themselves, going to have to go to outside counsel. I assume it's going to have to go to outside counsel. These are two very avoidable lawsuits. One of them happens to be in the nature of breach contracts, similar to the iStar deal or the potential lawsuit that's going to flow from iStar. The city seems to be a little inconsistent in terms of how tolerant it is for engaging in litigation and the costs associated with it. Like I say, I don't know, maybe you guys are in the dark. Maybe Mr. Agostis doesn't inform you. Maybe Jack doesn't inform you. Bottom line is that this couple of lawsuits that I personally have in the pipe that are totally preventable. But you guys seem intent on litigating. Either you fear litigation costs or you don't. You guys got to, got to decide which is going to be.
Thank you, Mr. Gussel. We have Ms. Makiba Smith. Ms. Makiba Smith here. Thank you, please get forward. Welcome. And how are you?
I'm a little nervous. It's my first time. Hello. This is my four-year-old daughter, Michaela.
Oh, welcome, welcome, Michaela. Hello.
Hi. If you could just bear with me. My name is Makiba Smith. I have moved here from the Bronx before the hurricane Sandy. And it's been hard for me. And I suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder. So when I go into agencies and ask for help, they've been turning me away. And the owners of Pine Street, Frank and Scott, they're beautiful people. I was renting hours on West Market Street before they ever came. And they saved me pregnant and they helped me with an apartment in the Bronx because everything was damaged here. But that apartment in the Bronx, it was on the first floor. It didn't give me no heed. So I've been there for the last four years. And when I gave birth to my daughter, they removed my daughter from me because at the time I didn't have nowhere to stay. It's been a year now. I've had my daughter back with me and I would like to relocate back to Long Beach. And I'm so sorry. Every time I go to the welfare office, they turn me away with nothing. I've been staying with my cousin on Pine Street for the past three months. But I can no longer stay with her because she's not going to be evicted because I'm not supposed to be there. So my thing to you guys is, I know I have the post-traumatic. I, I, I go for the health. But it's just that now to keep my baby with me and to start over again, when I go to that agency and to welfare, they just took me away. And mentally, it is taking a toll on me. And I'm just here tonight to just ask you guys first.
Ms. Smith, we're so sorry you're going through this and you have a beautiful daughter. And what, what we could suggest is that, you know, there, we do have folks here. That we have social workers here, we have people that have expertise in advocacy. And what you need is help with that, with advocacy. We, please leave your, we do have your name. And what we'll do is we'll see what we can do to help you.
Thank you so much. Can I just have a number? Can you make sure my number is correct?
Sure, if you stay with us, Ryan, Ryan will give you all of the information you need. And again, Ms. Smith, welcome to Long Beach City Council. Yes, welcome. And we'll see what we can do, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we have Ms. Eileen Hesion. Ms. Hesion, good to see you. Welcome again. It's good, I keep missing that Sammy Bold's thing. And I, I can't forget the year that you and I were there together.
It was wonderful. I'm looking forward to Pride Weekend. And I just have two concerns. One is safety and one is money. And I've attended a couple of meetings, a Chamber of Commerce meeting and a volunteer meeting. And it sounds like the Pride organization is not paying Long Beach anything. That we're just hoping to make some money, like on beach tickets. Is that right? They're not paying us anything for beach or anything?
I think it's right off.
Oh, good, I'm glad, all right. Well, maybe you'll explain. Also, I went to a volunteer meeting and there were very few volunteers there. I know that's not your area. But it does make me nervous. I'm hoping that the group will have more volunteers than I saw at that meeting. There's another one tomorrow night. There were only about 10 people there who were volunteering. And if we're expecting between 10 and 30,000 people, they're going to need a lot more volunteers than that. And they listed all the volunteers that they needed. There were many. Also, when asked about safety, the organizers said that they had been in touch with many different police departments and different organizations. But that's how they put it, they had been in touch with, but didn't have any response yet as to, you know, who's going to back up the Long Beach Police Department? Because if there's that many people coming in for three days, we will need help, I think. And then also, our police department, I'm sure, will be doing a lot of overtime work. And I'm wondering if we have to pay that overtime.
I know that the police commissioner is probably raring to respond about the safety. So while he walks off, I'll give a very simple answer, which is, as we've said a variety of times before, so the city will track its expenses. And in, while obviously the circumstances are quite different, but with any other major event, like this, the city will track its expenses and we expect reimbursement.
From Pride?
Yep, good. And that's, and that's part of the grant that they've been awarded from New York State.
All right, also with the beach tickets, you're expecting to sell maybe 10,000 beach tickets or so. Are those going to be on sale ahead of time? Or are they going to be lining up to buy tickets that day?
Yeah, there's been quite a preparation effort going on with that as well. But, and incidentally, that is separate from the reimbursement.
Also, if I can just, just with regards to your question on volunteers, it's my understanding that while the meeting was not necessarily the most well-attended, the initial volunteer recruitment meeting, there's been ongoing recruitment online from a bunch of different sources. And that, that amount of money has, the, the amount of volunteers that have come forward has increased quite significantly. At least that's what I'm told.
I won't speak in any detail about security measures for that weekend. But Pride was not contacted by the police departments. I held the meeting in the city manager's office. I had decision makers and high-ranking officials from New York City Police Department, the chief of department from Nassau County, a major from the state police, a captain from the MTA. The New York State Police Intelligence Unit is preparing strategic statements and risk assessment for me on a weekly basis. So we have a lot of things in place. I've already engaged staff in Nassau into assisting us with the medical director for the entire time of the event. There's certain departmental permits that have to be done. I do believe we have adequate resources. We have a command post that is going to be set up with state of the art that we were able to position very close to the event. And we've been working, meeting, four meetings at week minimum with the Pride to discuss communications and safety and the like. And I feel that we are prepared going into this. We have requested resources from other agencies and they have complied with those resources or those requests. So I, I do feel we are getting to an area. I've spoken with the Suffolk County Police that have hosted this. I've spoken with the State Park Police that have posted one out in East Park. And the flavor of this one seems to be different from some of the others. And it doesn't appear that the group coming to participate in this are, you know, widely inappropriate. They're, they're more fairly, this event is more, it's more fairly in front of the event. My biggest concern is that on the same weekend as the Pulse massacre in Florida and, you know, law enforcement copycats and other people trying to make a statement do concern us. So we are prepared for the worst, hoping for the best. I am monitoring all the pre-sales. They are pre-selling positions in the parade. They are pre-selling beach tickets. They are pre-selling the combatants on the beach and all those things. So that's how we extrapolate a number of potential attendees. The fact that there was some, a great deal of difficulty like locking in and a headliner for the Sunday concert prevented them from doing a lot of advertising. So I think that that, the unintended consequence of that is going to be a diminished participation number. So that I think it's going to be a lot more manageable due to a lot of those factors. But I, I have been in contact with a number of agencies to support our efforts.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Ms., yeah, so coming, Ms. Hesion, in regards to the beach passes, there will be a booth set up at the train station. So folks will be able to purchase beach passes right as they get off the train. And they also will be selling beach passes as they are right now, ahead of time, through the network. But in the parking lots that they're securing mostly east of us, they will be selling beach passes there as well. At the 5K race, which is early in the morning, beach passes normally wouldn't be sold, but they're going to be selling them then. So any opportunity we have where there's a crowd of people to sell beach passes to try and mitigate any traffic and folks from getting beach passes, we are consciously doing. So thank you.
Certainly, excellent question to.
President Torres has just made a, make a suggestion for the next meeting. Being that it's the meeting right before the event, that we would have someone here to represent Pride at our next city council meeting. This way, if there are any additional questions, the residents will have the opportunity to ask.
I think that's an excellent suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay, I think if we don't have any more comments, I'm going to move to our next, to our, hopefully, our last person. And that's Mr. DeLore. Mr. DeLore, you're still here with us. And we want to thank you for staying with us this late. And all of you to, for staying this late with us at the city council. And again, we, we look forward to hearing from you too, from everyone. Mr. DeLore, please feel free, if you just give us the name for the record and move forward.
My DeLore, 6225. Thank you for calling me last because I didn't want to. I'll make it very brief. I didn't want to speak at the Capitol plant because I thought it was exceptionally put together. What recommendation I would make is for the Public Works Department to look at the area from Park Avenue to Olive Street on Monroe Boulevard. Rather bumpy, it's near a church, near business, and it's one block off the main thoroughfare. I went in last night to double-check my opinion. And saying that National Boulevard here from Park Avenue to, rather west side, Southbound. I'm going to keep it brief and funny because I called the DPW the other day to fix a pottle and it was done within 24 hours. I called the Nassau County today because this law me. I called the Nassau County today because of this long metro near Speedway. I, there's no way the counties would beat our city in how fast they do potholes. So that's my, my last. The last thing that I want to say is when you do coordinate with the WALKS, since I live in the WALKS, I'd be happy to coordinate or host some kind of gathering meeting so you don't have to explain multiple issues because there are many, as you know, President Torres. That's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you for your time, thank you for your hard work and I, I do appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Mr. DeLore. Thank you, everybody.
This is the article that was in today's news day that Mr. Duba had mentioned in case you haven't seen it. Thank you.
Thank you again, thank you again, Mr. DeLore. Thanks, everyone, for staying with us for this hour and get home safely.